Amen. Hand to heart as we pledge our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room that may be turned into the clerk to your right. In this evening, we would invite Kim Straub of the Arts Council to come forward. She will be updating us and providing a presentation on intersection artwork. Good morning or good afternoon, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Mel and council. It's a pleasure to be here. Can we bring up the PowerPoint, please? I'm pleased to be here tonight to give a brief update on the CAIG projects, which include two main intersections, one at River Hills Drive and 56th Street, and the other in the heart of downtown Temple Terrace at Bush Boulevard and 56. CAIG, as I mentioned when I was here before, are the Community Arts Impact Grants, and they were created to make art and cultural opportunities more accessible, to support programs with geographic, ethnic... Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. CAIG were created to make arts and cultural opportunities more accessible, to support programs with geographic, ethnic, and age diversity, and to provide access for veterans and people with disabilities. CAIG grants are managed by the Arts Council of Hillsborough County, and they are funded by the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. We were grateful to be awarded two grants. Each has a value of $5,000. The Temple Terrace Arts Council is project manager for the intersection of inclusion murals, which are located at River Hills and 56. The subject matter determined by Temple Terrace residents is the stunning flora of the community. Four artists from culturally diverse backgrounds, each with a distinctive artistic style, will embrace and illustrate the concept. Each artist will paint one of the four walls at the intersection. We have a little schedule going now. Artist Mike Knapp will paint February 29th, that's Saturday. Artist Amina Khan will paint March 14th. Artist Junior Polo is developing a sketch right now, and the fourth artist is in negotiations. Okay. So this slide, at the top of it, shows the blank intersection wall, and that is the southeast corner of River Hills and 56. Below it, and slightly to the left, you will see the sketch created by Mike Knapp. He is a Temple Terrace artist, resident, and artist in residence for Mosey. You see on that Cypress trees, or Cypress knees, I should say, the temple orange, and to the right of it, the majestic grand oaks, which wrap our city in beauty. Below Mike, and to the right, is Amina's sketch of the grandiose lotus, surrounded by lush leaves resting in the Hillsborough River. Amina taught art in Temple Terrace, holds a doctorate in environmental engineering, and in May of last year, designed the intersection art at Glen Ridge and Inverness, which 20 people from our community joined in the making of. The second intersection, called Moments in Time, is awarded to the Preservation Society and is project managed by the Temple Terrace Arts Council. The four murals at Bush Boulevard and 56 will celebrate our unique and diverse history, including historically accurate examples visually represented with a nostalgic vintage style by four distinct artists. And you'll see here, the sketch placed on the southeast corner and drawn by local artist Terry Claren in his dreamy semi-impressionistic and somewhat realistic style, uses the icon Bat Tower as its focal point, surrounded by beautiful foliage, Medrev Homes, and the Hillsborough River. Mr. Moon of Paragon has been engaged in discussions regarding the project, and his construction schedule will be used to determine a paint date. Also, artist Tim Boatwright, an accomplished artist who grew up in Temple Terrace and whose poster is out in our lobby, has agreed to do one of the murals. And interestingly enough, he grew up in Temple Terrace, and his mother drives through the intersection on her way to shop at the grocery. So he's really excited about doing it. He is very well-known at the History Center for his beautiful posters, which are signal box wraps also in downtown Tampa. His sketch is due Friday, the February 21st. The two artists, the other two artists are in negotiation right now, so I can't give their names, but we will have the artists, five of the eight artists are moving ahead right now. Please be reminded that this is not a public paint project. This is held at intersections that are very, very busy, tens of thousands of people go through them every day. Charles has, I think, developed a metal mesh to separate the artists from the street and help protect them. And we do not want to put any of our artists or the people in our community at risk, so wait until the art is ready, then you can drive by it all the times that you want, at the proper speed limit, of course. And they'll be there for everyone to enjoy. And lastly, if I could, one last slide. I think it's really important to exercise and to visualize kind of what success for these beautiful projects will be like, and I had this slide before, but I think this is really important. It's collaboration, it's ownership, it helps to bring people together. It's going to make a really wonderful opening to our city, welcoming people to our city. I think it's going to transform our city and invite people to explore our story, our wonderful history, our beautiful flora. Art has a potential to create a welcoming entrance to our city and hopefully will encourage more art opportunities for us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening, Kim. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Board appointments, there is one vacancy on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board for an alternate member. The sole applicant is Mark Haxton. Would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Mark Haxton to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board as an alternate member for a term extending from February 18, 2020 until February 18, 2023. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries, and Mr. Haxton, thank you for your willingness to serve our community. Counsel, there is one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force. The sole applicant is George Rush. Would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of George Rush to the Riverwatch Task Force for a term extending from February 18, 2020 until February 18, 2023. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries, and thank you, Mr. Rush. Counsel, if the minutes of the February 4th, 2020 City Council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to the three minutes of the February 4th, 2020 City Council meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections, council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, there is a three-minute time limit that will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, if you will please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city manager and the directors in attendance do make note of these items that are related to city business.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'd like to ask if anybody from the city is going to talk about Farm Night, because I don't want to step on anybody if they are. Okay, I'll do it. Well, it's that time of year again. State Fair just closed, Strawberry Festival opens next weekend, not this, and we're going to have Farm Night BBQ in Temple Terrace, Friday night, 6 o'clock. We're going to have brisket, ribs, chicken, pulled pork, collard greens, baked beans, coleslaw, fried green tomatoes, and fried okra. At least eight flavors of ice cream and strawberry shortcake, and the non-adult beverages will be part of a $25 ticket. There'll be adult beverages available for a paid ticket. And we expect to have a great night. The weather looks like it's going to be ideal. We've had a couple of scares the last few years, but I just wanted to come up and put out a reminder. Has anybody got any questions or comments?
I'll be there.
Dale, remind people where they can get tickets if they're viewing and they haven't gotten their tickets yet.
We can get them at City Hall, Parks, I mean, Rec Center. We have them at M&amp;B, Eventbrite.com has them. If you go to Facebook, the Farm Night BBQ, it will do a better job than I just did of telling you where to get them. It's all on there, and if you get them in advance, they're $25 the night of the event, or $30. And Madam Mayor, I forgot to put one thing on my list that's not controversial, but I have an exciting thing, if you would allow me. I've got a minute and 19 seconds. M&amp;B, right here in the metropolis of Temple Terrace, is going to come out with a brand-new school milk in April. Will be the only ones in the United States that has it. And I'm very excited about it. We're only going to do it for two weeks, but it'll be an A2 protein and lactose-free milk, strawberry flavor. We have a lot of kids that have some difficulties, and this should be a milk for everybody. And it's happening right here. If you want more information, another day I'll come back, but it'll be in April, okay?
Excellent. Thank you so much.
I've got a nice video that's two minutes and 23 seconds. I could show it a later date or send it to you.
Very good.
Thank you for being... I've got to thumbs up.
Well, and thank you, Mr. McClellan. And what he didn't state, because of his wonderful humility, is all of the funds that are raised at Farm Night do go to support our Parks and Rec Department, and this is truly a labor of love that M&amp;B Dairy goes out of their way to put on this wonderful event. So for anyone who's been, we know we don't need a commercial. It's just the right place to be, but if you have never attended a Farm Night, please come out. It is just great fun. And corner of 301 and Harney, correct?
No, it's the intersection of Davis and Harney.
Davis and Harney. Don't go to 301. Go to Davis and Harney.
You'll miss it.
Questions about that?
Yeah.
Well, no, not right now.
About the Farm Night, are you going to have a wide band there again?
Well, we had a dead band coming. We're going to open with Bluegrass. We're going to have Charlie Ives' band after that, but in between the two bands, we have one of the most exciting things of the night. We have a former football player for the Florida Gators that was there when they invented Gatorade, and he's going to tell a story about how he was such a lousy player that he used him as a lab rat in case he died.
I'm interested in listening to my TV inside my house, but I'll listen to the speakers in the midst of it.
We're going to, this is something, I'm sorry.
We have had problems with that.
We've got five, yeah, you're from 301. Okay. Bluegrass, not too bad on the bass, and that was your issue. We do have five TV screens in there. We're going to be able to project this. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Charles Loeb.
Good evening, everybody. Charles Loeb, I live, I'm specifically in Terrace Park now to have the official neighborhood on there. There's a couple of points that I want, one point I wanted to bring up about the master station lift that was not discussed. I think it's important, and that is, no matter who you all get to do it, that the money is paid out in installments as opposed to being paid out upfront. The way the motion is, you would make, you would think it'd be paying all the money upfront as opposed to being paid out installments. The thing is that, the point being that it's under city control for, and I do think that point is important for your citizens to know that, no matter what you agree to in the future on that, that's number one. The other thing I want to talk about is the sales tax tonight. I'm already working on a letter, not a few letters about this, and we're getting one more for Commissioner Miller. I, let's just say it this way, really, what it really boils down to is democracy itself around here. As far as I am concerned, the courts are making shambles of our democracy. The people voted for it. I don't agree with it. Well, I voted down against it, but it's important that the people agree with it, and the people have the right to rule. In order to make this even feasible, I thought of four ideas that I have in mind to try to safeguard our rights, the public's rights, number one, that they have a game plan for a life, like however, go Hillsborough with the school board. Number two, that they have five or six-year reviews every five or six years to see that the, that the progress is being made on the sales tax. Number three, that it has gone through, that we, let's say we have legal protection, that the Elections Department guarantees whatever is put on there, and that if it's not, and if it is challenged, that it's done in an expeditions manner, expeditions, if not an emergency matter, rather than have what's going on in the court. And number four, that the, that the sales tax is not duplicated. There should not be a problem if the court rules by the election, but if they don't rule by the elections, that would mean that it would be duplicated. This should be avoided at all costs. The, there is also a way that I'm also writing him to, that maybe he could fight back to a little bit. I honestly do not think the county has been aggressive enough in fighting for the rights of the people. It's more like we're convenience, you know, like we had to be convinced to the government instead of the government working for us. It really is. And that, let's just say, I promised, promised to Ms. Schillinger, Councilman Schillinger, that maybe once I get it together, I'll let her read a copy of the letter and what I have in mind before I maybe bring it down to Commissioner Miller's office downtown, so he'll have awareness before the March 2nd meeting, and thank you all, and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Loeb.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council on items that are not on the agenda?
Seeing none, we will move forward. Melissa Zornita of Hillsborough County Planning Commission, Executive Director, will present the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application Fee Study. Ms. Zornita.
Good evening, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight and get some direction from you all as to how you might want to proceed on this issue. Recently, in the last year, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners commissioned a study to undertake a reevaluation of the costs that were incurred in the processing of plan amendment applications, as well as a number of other land development applications that are within their purview. But as it relates to the Planning Commission, it was focused on plan amendments, and the results of that were that they ultimately decided to increase their fees. In their case, they decided to increase all the way up to 100% of cost, which is a bit unusual. But the result was that ultimately, the unincorporated county also gets 25% of the fee, so the Planning Commission gets about 75% of it, but it, the fee now recoups costs that are incurred by the county administration, the county attorney's office, things of that nature. So when I discussed this with Charles Stevenson, to see whether or not this approach was something any of the cities were interested in undertaking. Plant City today has a fee both for the Planning Commission and then a fee that covers some of Plant City's cost. So now that we have two of the jurisdictions that we serve having fees that cover some of their costs, I wanted to present the opportunity to you all to consider whether or not you would want to undertake a study. That's something that the Planning Commission could work with a consultant on doing, and then see what the results are, and see whether or not you would be interested ultimately, based on those results, increasing the fees, having a fee that covers some of the time that is incurred by City of Temple Terrace staff, the clerk, the city attorney in processing these plan amendments, that is not covered by the current fee, which is $1,000, and all of that fee goes to the Planning Commission right now. But I did, Charles and I talked about it, we didn't want to pursue, proceed with even a study if, until we got some feedback and direction from you all. So that concludes what I had.
Thank you, Ms. Zornita. I'd ask Mr. Stevenson, do you have any recommendation to council prior to us beginning discussion on this?
I really don't have any specific recommendations, other than I think this is, I think this is the avenue that the rest of the jurisdictions are going down. I do think it is well worth us looking at it and seeing. What you're doing tonight is really non-committal, other than just telling us to move forward with the study and look at the feasibility of doing this. Until we do that, we really don't have that much information to share with you. It would certainly be something I think is, would be encouraging.
Very good. And prior to asking for a motion, I'd ask if there are any questions that council has for either Ms. Zornita or Mr. Stevenson, Councilwoman Donahue.
So did the City of Tampa and the Cities of Plant City, have they both gone into the study, and will they occur at the same time as ours, or are they all independent?
Well, Plant City did some study quite some time ago that caused them to have, they charged their own $1,000 fee, so they don't have quite the impetus to do that at the same time. But the City of Tampa is, I believe, interested and been talking with the city administration, and certainly would, it'd be my preference to coordinate those studies so that they were done at one time and use the same consultant to look at it all. It'd be more cost-effective for us.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Councilman Schisler, and then we'll go back to Mr. Stevenson.
Just curious, how much is the study going to be, and who will bear the cost of the study?
I believe the study that was conducted by Hillsborough County was in the range of $15,000 to $20,000, and that's something that the Planning Commission does have in our budget to be able to cover, again, if that's the desire of the cities for us to look at it.
So it's not going to come back on us for...
No, the cost of the study would not, no.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
Good question. I asked the same question. Now, just to make something very clear, Plant City is a little bit different than we are and a little bit different than Tampa. Plant City runs their own planning commission, if you would. So theirs is a little bit different, but certainly it, the same, same ideas apply, but you have to understand that they, they have their own fee schedule internally outside of the planning commission, so just to let you know that.
Any other questions? Counsel, what is your desire? Is there a motion to direct Mr. Stevenson and Ms. Zornita to go forward with the study?
I'll make that motion. I move to approve going forward with the study so that we can make the right choice down the road.
Thank you, Councilwoman Donahue. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Ross.
I can't, I'm not in favor of this idea, and I know that it's made in good faith, and I know that the response is, well, we're just doing a study. But ladies and gentlemen, anytime the government undertakes a study to determine whether fees and costs need to go up, it's going to go up. You might as well skip the study and just raise the rate. I don't think in the history of our country we've ever done a study that said, no, our fees are good, or they should go down. Every study results in an increase. So six months from now, we're going to be having a discussion up here about whether to adopt the proposed increase. Folks, we're doing very well right now. Part of the reason that we're doing very well is because you can't get a building permit or inspection in City of Tampa or Hillsborough County inside of months. Not because of the Planning Commission, because they're, they're spread too thin. You can't get a permit, you can't get a building inspection. It's, it's three or four months out sometimes to get a permit or call in for an inspection. We were just talking about Mr. Anisi and his staff. Try doing that in Tampa, right? Your contractors are sitting around for a week waiting for the inspector. That doesn't happen in Temple Terrace. So rather than, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think this is the wrong approach. I think we should, our budget's pretty good right now. We're realizing that on the back end, we're getting the increase in tax revenue for all this new construction. So it may take us a little while to get there, but we're realizing the benefits in the long run. All of our staff, albeit maybe sometimes overworked, they're salaried. So it's not, if, if we do need to add positions once in a while, and that cost we do have to absorb, but every time somebody does a project and the property taxes go up, it might take us a year or two to recover the cost, but we do recover it. And I like the ability to talk to these contractors and developers and say, look, guys, come to Temple Terrace. We can fast-track your permits, we'll get you inspections the same day. We go right through the red tape, you deal with the mayor, you deal with Charles, everything is smooth. You don't wait six months down at the county center or down at the City of Tampa. So I, maybe, well, there's no doubt in my mind that the study's going to show we need an increase. It always does. But I think that's a strategic error. I think we need to market ourselves as business-friendly and developer-friendly and build your stuff here, right? By the time you get a permit in Tampa, you'll be done here. That's what I think. So I, I'm not in favor of that. Well-intended, I know, but I don't think this is the right strategy.
Councilman Schisler.
I think, people know me, that I hate studies. We have studies that do studies, and I don't, I'm agreeing with Councilman Ross. I don't think we need it. We operate quite well within ourselves. If we have to charge more, then we'll worry about that some other day. But at this point, I agree, we need to put ourselves out as business-friendly. This is Temple Terrace, this is where you want to be. I'm not in favor of another study. I can't support this. I absolutely hate studies, because it's just, give somebody, somebody, something, some, somebody somewhere, something to do, and that's, that's not our responsibility, even though we're not paying for it, we will indirectly. So I don't think I can support this.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify with aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening. Next, a resolution adopting an update to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Procedures Manual for the City of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City. Mark Hudson, Executive Planner with Hillsborough County, will explain.
Mark Hudson, Planning Commission Staff. We are always striving to make our documents as user-friendly as possible and also make them very clear, and therefore, we have recently undertaken an update to the Procedures Manual for Plan Amendments for each of the three municipalities. And as part of that process, we have proposing to remove the county's procedures from that document and update the document to include the remaining three municipalities. This does improve the clarity of the document, it makes it a little bit easier for applicants to navigate. There are not many significant changes other than that, except for that we have updated the definition for a small-scale plan amendment based on state statute, and that we also have reduced the deadline, or reduced the deadline for pre-application conferences to seven days from what it was 15, so making it a little bit easier on the applicant to get together with staff before their submittal. Temple Terrace Legal and Planning Staff has reviewed this document and concur with its provisions. The Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission reviewed it and recommended its approval on January 13th. Over the last two weeks, both the City of Tampa and the City of Plant City have adopted the document, so with your positive recommendation and approval, it would be fully implemented. Therefore, on our staff's recommendation is for the City Council to adopt a resolution approving this updated document, the Procedures Manual for the Cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And prior to taking questions from council, I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, council, do you have any questions of Mr. Hudson? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion updating the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Procedures Manual for the City of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as described.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Hudson. Item 8B, a resolution approving fiscal year 2020 school grant funding awards. School Support Committee Chair Jen Wells will explain.
Jen is sick. So I'm back. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Kingsley Kelly Paratino, Vice Chair of the Temple Terrace School Support Committee, and I'm here again to present grant proposals. The committee and I would like to once again thank you for the additional budget that you provided this year. Thanks to your generosity, it gave us a second chance to host grants in the winter, and this makes two grant cycles this year as opposed to one in years past. This evening, we are recommending funding for... opposed to one in years past. This evening, we are recommending funding for nine out of 11 grants that were submitted. And although we have money left over, we're confident that the grants we are recommending are going to have the strongest impact in our schools, on our students, along with longevity. I believe you have a copy of the proposed grants. Okay. I will read the grant number, school, grant name, and amount funded. Okay, grant number 20-01 for Lewis, vested in Versatile's, amount funded $378.95. 2002, Lewis, Book Clubs, amount funded $137.28. 2003, River Hills, We Need Nonfiction, Part One for Third Grade, $497.15 funded. 2004, River Hills, We Need Nonfiction, Part Two for Third Grade, $497.15. 2005, Lewis, Access to Learning, amount funded $245. 2008, River Hills, Rock On, $389.50 funded. 2009 is for Temple Terrace, Parent Resource Room at Temple Terrace Elementary, amount funded $500. 2010, Lewis, Adapted PE Students Specialized Equipment, $441.49. And the final one for this evening, 2011, for Lewis, Versatile's for RTI and Home, funded amount $300.
Thank you very much. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel, do you have any questions?
No. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. It's fun.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the school grants. Is there any further discussion? Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a liaison to the group for, for, for counsel, again, I commend the group on the hard work that they do. We talked almost two hours to get this through, and they, they beat everything up to the, to the nth degree. They do a phenomenal job. They really, really care. And we're going to see some significant results from the first set of grants and then these. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. HC, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County and approval to use additional funds for EMS purchases. Scott Merly, Division Chief Operations, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I don't often get an opportunity to speak to you in this format, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm presenting a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Temple Terrace and Hillsborough County. Because the city of Temple Terrace provides emergency medical services, it is eligible to receive a portion of the State of Florida Department of Health grant allocated each year to Hillsborough County. The proposed interlocal agreement provides for the distribution of the city's share in the amount of $5,379.0. These funds must be utilized to improve or expand prehospital emergency medical services within the city. The budget for these funds has been approved by the State of Florida and includes the following equipment: two adult resuscitation CPR mannequins, one carry bag, and a fully integrated SIM pad, which gives us real-time feedback on the operations and interventions that we're performing on the mannequin. In addition to that, a pediatric CPR mannequin as well. The total cost for these items is $5,699.52. The department will utilize its EMS supplies budget to supplement the grant funds in the amount of $320.52 for the purchase of these items. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving an interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the city of Temple Terrace for the distribution of the State of Florida Department of Health grant funds to the city in the amount of $5,379.0. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. And prior to questions, I'd ask if there are members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel questions? Seeing no questions, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County and approval to use additional funds for EMS purchases.
Move to approve the interlocal agreement and the expenditure of the funds.
We have a mo, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving the stipulation and agreement of settlement in Leah Family Partnership LTD versus city of Temple Terrace. City Attorney Pam Shoshon will explain. Ms. Shoshon.
This is a resolution approving...
Can you speak into the microphones?
This is a resolution approving the resol, the agreement with, to settle the case of Leah Family Partnership Limited with the city of Temple Terrace. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and talk about it a little bit and also sort of lead into the next item that will come up because they're both related. However, instead of, when I'm finished asking you to approve this resolution, I'm going to ask that you make a motion postponing the resolution to the next meeting, because as I've looked through this settlement, I see that it refers to an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B, which is not attached to my copy, and I don't see that it's attached to the city manager's copy, so I'm guessing that you don't, not have those exhibits as well. This document was prepared by our insurance council, and it doesn't seem that those exhibits are attached. But the resolution itself that was presented with the agenda today did not call for it to be implemented today anyway. It actually refers to it taking effect upon our next meeting anyway, because it incorporates a change to our rental housing program ordinance. And being an ordinance, it has to have a public hearing and two public reading, and two readings. Today is, was going to be and is going to be the first reading of that ordinance, and at the next meeting, we had proposed that there be a second reading, and that be the public hearing attached to it. That way, there will be a reading today and give everybody plenty of time to prepare for the next meeting if they want to say something about it in a public hearing. So to give the background, though, on this stipulation and settlement agreement, this case originated in 2016. The plaintiff was Leah Family Partnership Limited by its principal, Joseph Nolan. They had filed a class action complaint against the city in state court originally, challenging the constitutionality of our rental housing ordinance, and the case was ultimately removed to the federal court. A preliminary ruling was made by Judge Moody in that case, and he ruled that the ordinance did violate the unconstitutional conditions doctrine, and that warrantless searches conducted of unoccupied properties did violate the Fourth Amendment. Now, I want there to be note that there was no compelling evidence that our, that any of our inspectors ever searched an unoccupied property. We don't, we've maintained all along, and there's been no evidence that that ever occurred. But the judge ruled on simply the wording of our current ordinance and found that, as worded, it was unconstitutional. And therefore, we have agreed, and the amended ordinance is included in the copy of the settlement that was provided to you. We had agreed that we would amend the ordinance appropriately, and the plaintiffs and us as the defendants, we have agreed to the wording as you see within the proposed stipulation. The first reading of that ordinance, that amended ordinance, will be the next thing on the agenda. The settlement funds, which go to pay the plaintiff and will go to pay the attorney's fees for the plaintiff, and will also go to pay the members of the class, will not be coming out of the city's funds other than our deductible, which has already been paid quite some time ago. Our deductible for this insurance was $25,000. That's already been paid. All of the rest of the funds that are mentioned within this settlement will be paid by our insurance carrier. Checks, it does address any checks that may be paid out to class members that end up not being cashed, may go to addresses that the person isn't there anymore, and they'll ultimately come back to the insurance company or to our attorneys. And if they're not cashed, the agreement includes that those monies, they may be zero dollars, they may be, it could be up to $81,000, because that's the amount going out to the class members. Anything that is not cashed will be going to the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation. I do want to note that I looked them up and see that there is a typographical error in paragraph number five on page nine. So before you are asked to approve the resolution, I will ask the attorneys to make a correction there, because I believe they spelled the name Stephen incorrectly. Stephen Siller was a fallen firefighter who was at 9/11, even though he was on his way to play golf at the time. He was off duty. He returned to the Twin Towers and ended up sacrificing his life there. The Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation, I apologize for my voice tonight, I don't know what's going on, but the foundation exists to build mortgage-free smart homes for the most catastrophically injured service members. And 93% of every doll, or 93 cents of every dollar goes directly to the program's services. The, our outside counsel had suggested them as receiving these funds, and with discussion with the city manager, we had felt that that was an appropriate place to possibly get zero, possibly get $81,000. But again, it's just, it's the catch-all for any checks that do not get cashed. The plaintiff's attorneys have also agreed that that is an appropriate place for the money to go. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those now. And as I said, I'm asking that you postpone, you make a motion to postpone this resolution to our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Shoshon. And prior to questions, I'd ask if there is anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll open it up to counsel. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, per Ms. Shoshon's request, if acceptable, would entertain a motion to postpone approving the proposed stipulation agreement of settlement in the pending federal litigation.
Move to postpone as recommended.
Second up.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, item 8E, a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances, revising Article 4 of the Housing Code. City Attorney Pam Shoshon will explain.
This is, as was just stated, this is the first reading of the ordinance amending this. The portions that are being stricken were contained within your, within the proposed stipulation and agreement for settlement that I just discussed. The additions are there and put in bold type rather than your usual, you see it usually as underlined. If it's an addition this time, it's put into the stipulation and agreement of settlement in bold type. You may have also been provided an actual copy of the amended ordinance, and rather than, again, there only needs to be one public hearing. I'm suggesting that the public hearing take place at the next meeting, and tonight, that we should have our first reading of the ordinance, and if the clerk would read the title.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 8 Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances by revising Article 4 Housing Code, Section 8-134 Rental Permits, Section 8-135 Permit Inspections, and Section 8-136 Renewal of Rental Permits, providing authority to codify providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinance as a conflict here with, and providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. The ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March 3, 2020. Item 8F, a first public hearing and reading to adopt an ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of 5212 Temple Heights Road, RZP 19-02. The public hearing is now open. Council members, if you would please disclose any written or oral ex parte communication on this matter. Councilwoman Donahue?
I, to my knowledge, I have not had, actually, no, I'm looking to make sure this is the one. I did have a discussion at the Affordable Housing Board on this particular item as it fits into the Affordable Housing Board plan.
I've had none.
I've had none?
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you. Senior Planner Gus Carpus will explain.
Good evening. Is my PowerPoint working? She's asking if she needs to swear somebody in.
There's going to be testimony.
Okay, so.
Point of order, is there anyone that will be testifying on this item? Please stand.
Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? I'll help you go ahead?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Carpus.
I'm sorry about that. So what you have before you is a zoning reclassification for 5212 Temple Heights Road. It's currently owned by Habitat for Humanity of Hillsborough County. Okay, again, located at 5212 Temple Heights Road. The current zoning for the property is single-family residential 7.5. What they're looking to do is to rezone that 2.38 acres to planned development. This will allow them to come with a plan later, which they will be doing here. Some photos of the property. But Habitat for Humanity is also submitting an application for a plat and for site plan. What, so what the proposed use for the property would be, and this is at our last meeting, I don't know if it's changed any, but to be planted into single, 12 single-family lots, and there would be a private road construction, constructed on the site that would serve only that property, would not connect to any other road on the other side there. There are some of the elevations that they submitted for the type of housing that they're proposing for that area. The Development Review Committee did not have any objections, though, you know, when we go through the process, there's going to be some engineering and whatnot for the road. But at this point, for the rezoning, they had no concerns. And staff does recommend approval for the rezoning of this property. That's all I got on that.
And Mr. Carpus, I'd ask, are the representatives or the applicant in attendance, and would they like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Lynette Glass, Community Development Manager with Habitat for Humanity. Really just wanted to make a point of clarification that we're under contract for the property and that we hope to close on it in a few weeks. And everything in the proposal does stay the same. It's 12 lots that we're going to be creating for 12 single-family homes, all for households below 80% of AMI. And there'll be some detention or retention towards the rear of the property for the road that we're putting in. And as far as funding sources, we are hoping to receive funding from Hillsborough County for the infrastructure and, for part of the infrastructure cost, as well as the acquisition cost. And then we also have received word that we're receiving funds from the Federal Home Loan Bank to assist with the construction on the project, the Federal Home Loan Bank of Atlanta. This is a project that is infill development and is consistent with the surrounding uses. And I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. And prior to... And prior to posing any questions to you, I'd ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item.
If we'd like to.
But please, please come up to the podium, Mr. Loeb.
I don't have a need to make a swearing in, but just have a question for the lady here. And that is, have you thought about duplexes, so maybe you could house more people in that
We are aware that we are being requested to look at density within areas in Hillsborough County, and we did speak with the planning staff about what we would do here, and we thought that we would try to use the single-family model for this development. The duplex model, we are, I did, did fail to mention too, there's, there's a beautiful stand of trees nearly in the center of the site. We did meet with the City of Temple Terrace Arborists to see if we could try to maintain those trees, try to retain them, and maybe create a little bit of a park there. So trying to fit in all of the elements, we decided to stay with the single-family concept.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item?
Madam Mayor, I did receive an email from a resident who was not opposed to the project, but they just wanted to make sure that the driveway and garage size permitted vehicles to park onsite and not in the yards and not in the roads. That was their only concern. They noted that was against the city's code of ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Carpus. Counsel, questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Ross.
Question for Mr. Carpus. I know that this is not site plan review, but you brought up, so I got, I didn't see this in the backup material, you mentioned a private road.
Yes.
So can you bring the map back up and show us where the, I know this is not site plan approval, but just for everybody's edification, where will the road and the houses be in relation to the road? Will they go off of Temple Heights?
So if you, if you look at the road there.
Which one's which? Because I can't, your map's different than our map.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta orientate myself to this, too. So they showed, they showed the road in there, and there, that's the map I wanted, thank you. So if you look on, I'm sorry, if you look on the west side of the property, you see that.
Which is to the left side of the street?
So now, and the way it's on there would be on the, on the top.
Okay.
So you can see they've got the little road there that tees out.
Yeah.
So that's where they're going to be proposing to put that. And that's, again, the specifics aren't there yet because we haven't really sat down with the site plan and.
Okay, so on the top or on the west side of this proposed road, there's, that's the backyard of other existing houses?
Correct. If we go back to the aerial there, ooh, it doesn't fit very good.
So the road would be what we're, the left edge of that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I got you. Okay, thank you.
The applicant says she has one more thing to say.
Hello again, Lynette Glass. We have met multiple times with the City of Temple Terrace Planning Staff, as well as the City Engineer and the Director of Public Works, and we have discussed this following the Temple Terrace, I guess, Transportation Manual to make sure that we're meeting the city codes. But we plan on this road being part of the city infrastructure network. It's not going to be a, a, a part of the City of Temple Terrace infrastructure system. It's not going to be a private road.
Okay.
And it does run along the western boundary of the property. And it provides, there is a T-turnaround at the end that's going to be for the fire trucks to turn around, and that was something that the City Engineer and the Public Works Director discussed that we needed.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to get too deep because I know it's not site review, but thank you.
Is, are there other questions, counsel? With that, the public hearing will now be closed. Clerk to read title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning two point three eight plus-minus acres of land located south of University Square Drive and west of Overlook Drive with an address of five-two-one-two Temple Heights Road, from zoning classification, single-family residential in Temple Terrace to planned development in Temple Terrace for RZP nineteen dash zero-two, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
I move to approve the ordinance on first reading.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. The ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March third. Item eight G, a first public hearing and reading on an ordinance to adopt voluntary annexation of folio number zero-three-eight-two-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero-zero and a portion of folio number zero-six-one-three-six-three-dash-zero-zero-zero, annexation twenty-dash-zero-one. The public hearing is now open. Counsel members, if you would please disclose any written or oral ex parte communication.
Other than the same conversation I had at the advisory Affordable Housing, Affordable Housing Board, I've had none.
I've had none?
Other than with Mr. Stevenson, I've had none.
I've had none. I've had none.
Senior Planner Gus Carpus.
Okay, good evening again. I'm not going to read off those folio numbers, but the property is on add rest. So the owner of the property is DCH Citrus LLC. The applicant is Seafree Industrial Properties Incorporated, and I believe there's a representative here from them. What they're looking to do is to annex eighty-one point zero-two acres of land into the city, and it is two different folio numbers, the one, but it's going to be everything west of three oh one over to their property line on, on the west side. The existing zoning is agricultural rural, and that's in Hillsborough County. And what the proposed zoning would be is a planned development for the City of Temple The DRC did review this request and determined there would be no negative impact with this annexation. The Hillsboro Planning Commission, actually, I should say, our Planning Commission reviewed the request and has no objection to the annexation. Staff also did recommend approval for the adoption of the first reading of the ordinance for this annexation request.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
No, thank you.
Are there members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? I do have, actually, I do have a form. Gene Pettis?
We've got a whole lot of questions about what they're going to do to that property because it directly affects us and my other neighbor here, and we haven't been able to really get any answers, other than they want to put some office buildings up there. Now, we've got office buildings down on three oh one at I four that are totally vacant. I think both buildings are the length of three football fields roughly, and they got one tenant in there, and that's it. And we don't understand the purpose for it. And of course, between the trees they've got, the coyotes we've got in there, the bobcats that are in there, the gulf her tortoises in that property and stuff, there's a whole lot of things before you guys just rubber-stamped this, I think, need to be addressed and looked into, and we need to be made aware of as neighbors of that property.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Priscilla Gonzalez?
I'm kind of afraid. I haven't been of, I haven't spoken to a large group in a long time, and I would like to say that I think I'm the only resident on the edge of this property, the only house. I have two acres, I have horses back there. I was back there years and years ago, which seems to be more like thirty or more years, and I have seen that area, all the wildlife that lives back in there. And there's all kinds of wildlife back there, and it's so peaceful. But what I'm here for today is I know I can't stop progress, so since I'm the only, I feel like the outpost, and I see everything that goes on back there. A lot of people don't think that there's anything back there. I'm back there. And I think I told you the reason why I'm back there, I picked a location where I could have horses and a lot of land. And during these years that I've lived there, I've seen dove hunters that shot bullets over my house, they didn't know my house was back there. Okay, I also saw vagrants that came in and built, put up huge tents. Well, now they come in, since they started developing or clearing the land, now they're coming in with little tents, little vagrants coming in from Wind Dixie and off of three oh one and off of Harney Road. They don't have a place to stay, and they come back in there. Thank goodness, they don't know I'm way back there unless they come on three oh one. But my problem is I don't mind development. I would like for whoever's developing this land, if they would please, please, please put up no trespassing signs or posted signs. I know that won't keep the honest person out, I mean, it will keep the honest person out, but others that, like I said, I've been there for years, and they've gone through there with bicycles, they've gone through there with three-wheelers, bike racers, they would have races through there, and it would start from Wind Dixie, and it used to be an old orange grove, hundreds of acres of orange, orange groves. And these racers saw, boy, this is perfect place to race, and they would race through there and race all the way, all the way back. They didn't know I was back there, and they'd come racing back through there, and then back up through three oh one, up Harney Road where the railroad track used to be and all around, and my time is up, I think. Anyway, I would love to see posted signs go up.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
All right, thank you.
I would ask if the applicant would like to respond to any of the comments from the public?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having me here tonight. In response to Priscilla's comment, we will work with the current property owner to put some no trespassing signs. We're aware that there's been vagrants on the site, so we will absolutely make that effort. And in response to Gene's comment, we'll, we'll be addressing the, the project and the site plan and what we're proposing here in our rezoning first reading on the seventeenth. So we look forward to that opportunity.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, questions?
I just have a comment. I'm sorry.
Not time for, for comments right now, it's only questions. We're in a hearing.
I want to change my answer.
Any other questions? The public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of two parcels of certain real property totaling eighty-one point zero-two plus-minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County and located south of Harney Road and west of US Highway three oh one, legally described in Exhibit A attached here to and made a part hereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Move to approve the ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Councilwoman Donahue?
I apologize to my statement earlier that I had had conversation. I flipped the page and saw the word overlook. I thought we were having a second reading of the ordinance that we had just approved. So I have had no conversation whatsoever, other than with the city manager about this property.
Any other further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. The ordinance will appear for a second reading on Tuesday, March third, 2020. Next, a public hearing and second reading of ordinance fourteen ninety, amending chapter two of the Code, firefighter pensions, retirement, adding cancer presumption. The public hearing is now open. Scott Merly, Division Chief Operations, will provide a brief explanation. Chief.
Good evening once again. I am presenting the second reading of ordinance fourteen ninety, amending chapter two of the Code, firefighter pension and retirement. This amendment includes the addition of cancer presumption that became effective July first, 2019, after the passing of Senate Bill four twenty-six, and I'm happy to briefly resummarize that for you. An additional presumption has been added to the line of duty disability and pre-retirement death presumptions. With the diagnosis of cancer or the circumstances that arise out of the treatment of cancer, a firefighter shall be totally and permanently disabled in the line of duty if he or she meets the plan's definition of total and permanent disability due to the diagnosis of cancer or the circumstances that arise out of the treatment of cancer. Additionally, a firefighter shall be considered to have died in the line of duty if he or she has, if he or she dies as a result of cancer or the circumstances that arise out of the treatment of cancer. It is recommended that the city council approve the proposed ordinance, adding new language regarding firefighter cancer presumption that became effective on July first, 2019, after the passing of Senate Bill four twenty-six.
Thank you. I'd ask if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this Counsel, questions? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please read title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending chapter two, administration and elections, Article Three, Officers and Employees, Division Three, pensions and retirement, subdivision four, firefighters of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Temple Terrace, to implement the conclusive firefighter cancer presumption established by Section one-one-two-point-one-eight-one-six Florida statutes and rebuttable disease presumptions. Under Florida statutes, Section one-one-two-point-one-eight, one-one-two-point-one-eight-one and one-seven-five-point-two-three-one, amending Section two dash two-zero-six, subparaphrase three of the retirement system relating to the pre-retirement death benefits, amending Section two dash two-oh-seven, subparaphrase A, the retirement system relating to line of duty disability benefits, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for severability, providing for repealer, and providing for an effective date.
Would entertain a motion adopting proposal, the proposed ordinance fourteen ninety. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt a motion as a reference.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Counsel, is there any carryover business from our last meeting? Seeing none, there is a discussion on an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. City Manager Stevenson will explain. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If counsel will remember, back in November of last year, there was some discussion about the agreement, an extension of agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Pauley has been working since then, trying to get an agreement together. What we have provided to you is, I think, the best agreement that we can come up with. I have given counsel a copy of that agreement, along with some other handouts, and the agreement that was dated twenty fifteen of May is the old agreement. We've got a review of the chamber relationship by marketing, Communication Officer Lori Hayes, and a, a write-up on a business summary and marketing summary by our Business Relations Manager Greg Pauley. Also provided to you was a, a schedule of the newly designated Uptown Chamber Membership Schedule, that's the, the fee schedule, for different membership categories. We also gave you a copy of minutes from a council workshop dated nineteen ninety-seven, just for reference, to let you know that this discussion's been going on for twenty-three years. One of the things that we have been trying to do was to sign an agreement with the chamber so that there is some accountability with the funds that the city has been giving to the Chamber of Commerce. Essentially, what came back was the, the agreement is basically split up into two categories, one for business services and another for services having to do with the Fourth of July activities. The last iteration that we got back from the chamber, the, the Fourth of July activities were totally stricken. Obviously, they don't, they don't care to get involved with the Fourth of July activities moving forward, and there were some minor changes to the business services. I can tell you this, that after looking at their fee schedule and what one would get for a membership, we can certainly do for a lot less than the money that we're paying the chamber, we can get the same services out of the chamber. That being said, I had taken the liberty to write a memorandum that I'm sure all of you have had a chance to read, but certainly it is my recommendation that we cease the financial support with the chamber, as been in the past, and assume full responsibility for the Fourth of July activities. If and If, in fact, that's council's direction to staff, we would ask that the $12,500 that we currently give the chamber be directed so that the city's staff is well-prepared to take on this responsibility. I've had conversations with Mr. Langfeld about the 4th of July activities. We can certainly pick up those requirements. In the business services, we feel that we can do an adequate job, if not a better job of communicating to all of our businesses in town, the need to localize economic development. I don't know that I'm comfortable in that. Again, this is my recommendation, certainly this is up for discussion with council, but I certainly feel that we can do and we can pick up this, we can pick up this portion of something that I think has been lacking in the city. So with that, Madam Mayor, I stand for questions unless council wants to have some conversation about this. My recommendation would be to join the chamber and stay connected with the chamber as a member of the chamber, under their guidelines of membership fees. With that, I'll give it back to you. Thank you.
Council, I'd entertain a...
Excuse me, I do have some questions. I don't want you to portray the chamber as that they've decided that they don't care about the 4th of July. In November, they came to us and said, you know, we know there's a tight timeframe for planning this event. And, you know, and we said at that meeting, yeah, we really need to get this moving, we need to get this going. And we urged you at that time to make an agreement with the chamber so that they could start the process of 4th of July. Now, when I was the Executive Director of the chamber, we started the process for the 4th of July in October. And working with the city, the city ordered the fireworks way back in October, like the moment we approved, the budget was approved, the order went in for the fireworks. I don't know where you are with the fireworks and that's not the chamber's issue, but it is just amazing to me that knowing that this was something that they needed to get the ball rolling on, why did it take three months to come to a decision? I mean, I've seen emails, the ones that you have here, there've been some of the ones you gave me and some of the ones I've asked for from the chamber, you know, everything had to happen electronically? You know, there are a couple of things in that, in that original plan that were just something that the chamber could not do. I mean, there were, there were items, it seemed like everything was changed. And I don't know that everyone is privy to knowing what all they were asked in the beginning. And so from what I understand, edits have gone back and forth, back and forth, and there's never been a one-on-one meeting. It's all been directed at Mr. Pauly, who then says, I'll take it to the city manager. I mean, I just, you know, we've just sat here tonight and talked about how fast things happen in Temple Terrace. So why did this take three months? And we, and they're at the point now where they're saying, we can't do the 4th of July. And you're really going to put pressure on city staff to do it starting in February? So that's my first question. And apparently, the chamber has said, we're okay. You can, you can take the 4th of July and handle it. I know city staff is capable, I'm not worried about that at all. I do have some questions about things that the chamber was able to do.
Just a quick point of order, so a question was posed. This is the time for questions. Let's give City Manager Stevenson an opportunity to answer that question.
That would be great, thank you.
Ms. Donahue, I'm not quite sure what emails I shared with you. I don't remember sharing any emails with you.
They were attached to the...
We, you know, we had charged Mr. Pauly, who started this conversation with the chamber, not November, but way before November. We've been working on this for some time. There has been, and again, I'm not going to sit here and allow the chamber to say that we have not been trying to actively engage with the Chamber of Commerce. We tried to, we tried to set up a meeting last Monday, if I'm not mistaken, at the latest. And we got a response back that that was not convenient for them before we came to the conclusion that this is the best we can do. You know, this has been a project that's been on our desk for a long time. I don't know that I'm going to sit here and allow the chamber to say that we have dragged our feet, because when we gave stuff back to the chamber, chamber had to take it to their board, which took an enormous amount of time. We turned things around in a couple of weeks. Now, you want to get a, I mean, I can certainly ask Mr., bless you, Mr. Pauly to come up and he can give you certainly a scenario of what we were dealing with trying to get this paperwork back and forth. But we have not sat on this paperwork, okay?
May I ask a question about the membership?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Right now, I looked at the directory and I thought I had one in my packet and I don't. I think right now we have 10 or so city officials who are listed, many of the department heads, city manager, city clerk, various others. The Emerald level will not give us that. So I hope that you will not take the least expensive and perhaps go for the trustee level, if that's your way of thinking, that we're going to get the same level of participation. So, and I also want to make sure that when the money from the, that was budgeted for the chamber, when it comes back, that, that the full $5,000 for the 4th of July goes to the Parks and Rec Center, because they're going to need every bit of it. It costs the chamber more than $5,000 to put on the parade and that's why they bring in sponsors. And by the way, those sponsors come from, they don't just come from Temple Terrace, they come from wide range of neighborhoods. So I hope you will consider that if we decide tonight to break with the chamber altogether, which I, I really am sad to see that happen after 56 years of partnering with the city. I really think this is a short-sighted view of someone who has been a loyal partner to us for over, over half a century.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question, now you talk about the 4th of July activities being taken over by leisure services. That's going to be the parade staging, the parade lineup, the applications for the parade, all the activities on the first fairway, and the fireworks. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Council would entertain a motion. What is your pleasure moving forward?
Well, if you want to know my pleasure, I move that we approve the contract as offered by the chamber, which outlines that they will continue to promote the city in all opportunities and the only change is to remove the work toward the 4th of July, reducing the contract to $7,500.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the discussion.
There is a motion and a second discussion. Councilman Ross.
I too have followed this issue since we, I don't remember exactly when we last discussed it, October, November, somewhere around there. And I do agree that the negotiations on this have moved at glacier pace here. I don't know where the fault lies, but it's sure taken an awful long time to reach a non-agreement. And the ship has sailed on the 4th of July. It's too late now for them to get golf carts, it's too late now for them to get the stand lights, it's too late now for them to get the things. So at this point, they did send an email in January saying they don't want to do it anymore at this point, but it wasn't because they don't want to do the 4th of July for the city. It's that, at least this is what they told me, it's that they, they don't want to do it and not do it well, and they were concerned at that point that they wouldn't be able to contract with the vendors that they need to contract with because too much time has expired. So I'm not opposed to the city doing the 4th of July, I feel a little bad for Carl and his crew, but you know, if we can do it, that's fine. I think the issue, in my mind, I guess the issue before us is, do we get a membership or do we continue to support them at the $7,500 level to get the other services that they do to promote the city? I really wish that we had some opportunity to have a discussion of the goal setting or something before making that final decision, because, I mean, I've read the backup material, I've read the analysis, which is very well done by your staff, thank you, but I just think this is an awkward place to have some of the discussion that I'd like to occur. I certainly do think that the city does its marketing efforts, but I also think the chamber does some marketing efforts, and I do think they bring in some sponsors that are not in the city. Whether they bring in enough of that to make it worth the additional $5,000 or whatever it is, I don't know. I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that, and this is a difficult place to do that. So this is a tough one. I don't like making decisions like this because I don't feel like we have good information. We don't have an opportunity to vet this fully, at least not in my mind. And what you're seeing here is not indecision on my part, it's I'm conflicted because I'm getting information from them, I'm getting information from the city manager, and you know, I, I don't know. So, thank you.
Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was not in favor of going back and renegotiating the contract back in, was it October? Whatever. The discussion first came up. I felt that the way that the chamber was changing their name, they were walking away from us, okay? I felt that way for quite some time. They were Temple Terrace Chamber of Commerce and Greater Temple Terrace Chamber of Commerce. Now they're Uptown Chamber of Commerce. So I've had too many people come up to, where's Uptown? And there's an expletive involved in that, you know, I've never heard of, what is Uptown? So, well, you got to go down about five miles and then it's a little bit north, a little bit west, wherever they want it to be. So I, I will not support it. I think that we're, we'll be served just fine by being a member of it. With that, and, I mean, I can't, I, during the campaign, it was a subject matter that was brought up to me by many, many people walking the streets. What do we get for this? What are we doing with this? Why are we, why are we spending this money on that? So, you know, 850, 850, what is Emerald level's 550? I think that's sufficient if it keeps us involved with it, which you don't want to walk away completely, okay? But they definitely don't really care whether they're in Temple Terrace or not. The office might be here, but I think as soon as they get an opportunity, it'll be at whatever they call that up there anymore, the Uptown Center or the University Square Mall, or I believe, truly believe that it'll be gone here very shortly. I cannot support the motion, it sustains.
Thank you, Councilman Chambers.
Our question, are we a member now? I mean, what's our current status? We are a member? When does our membership?
I don't know, you know, that statement was made by the Executive Director last time they were here, that we have 20 memberships. I've yet to find from my staff who's got a membership that makes up that 20 memberships. And Ms. Donahue had just mentioned all the names that we have listed in the directory. I don't know that we need a list of directories for City Hall. We can put City Hall in there, and certainly we have people that can now pass on, if you need a city manager, you can get city manager, you need the police chief, you can get the police chief, and Mr. Pauly in the fire department. I mean, we can, we can create a lot of this, we create a lot of this marketing now anyway for the chamber. I mean, the chamber gets our marketing information from Ms. Hayes right now, that markets the city. And whatever write-ups we do, put in their, their monthly newsletter. I mean, we provide that. I just, I'm not saying that the chamber is not doing something for the City of Temple Terrace, I just think that we can get the same thing for a membership and do our own marketing that would encourage all businesses, because the chamber is tied into businesses that are just members, all right? They don't share information with the guy across the street that's not a member. We can share that information, we should be sharing all that information, even if the guy's not a member of the Chamber of Commerce. He should still get the same benefits of our economic activities and our drives that we put, put together and are trying to do in our three corridors. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not down on the chamber, I mean, if the chamber wants to continue doing business like they've been doing business, I'm okay with that. But I need this council to give me direction that you want to pay $7,500 for that work. Part of what I gave you in your package was a summary of minutes to 1997, that back then, a completely different council was having the same conversation that we're having now.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to address the 1997. In 1997, the chamber was very small and they had gone through several different moves. They were actually housed here in City Hall for a while, then they moved to the Bank of America where they've been since then. And if you read the whole thing, there are several different comments. There's a comment by Mr. Hammond Tree that says, you know, we need to get the word out about us out of Temple Terrace. I mean, we have to, we have to, we have, we need to work with them. I mean, it was a discussion, but since then, they have taken on a very professional business attitude and actually ran it more like a business. And when I started, they had 300 members, when I finished, they had 650. And then you've had several directors since me. And so maybe I am taking this a little personal, I can't help it, I have chamber in my blood. But, but I can tell you that they are out there every day talking about Temple Terrace and about the Temple Terrace businesses and how they connect to the bigger world. And if Uptown is the bigger world, and if that's where the progress is going, then why would we not want to be part of that progress? So I don't think they're going to stop promoting us. They have an awful lot of connections here. They still believe in Coffee with a Cop and Principals, the President's Round Tables, all those things. I would seriously doubt that they're going to stop, because they are so connected to us. I think the whole idea here is, do we really want to take on? And if we do, then we're going to take on a big job. I mean, it costs $11,000 a year to produce that directory, that if you take a minute and look at the directory, the first nine pages are only about the City of Temple Terrace. So, you know, if we decide to break contract, then we've broken contracts and we'll give the jobs. I'm sure we have staff who can do it, so...
Councilman Chambers.
That's just not my motion.
Okay. Again, back to my question, I asked, are we currently a member? Do we know?
Yes.
I, I, when does our membership end?
I don't know that we have got a membership.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, somebody answered.
Yes, by your, by the contract, all of, any, any of those names listed were a member. So that came, that came with the, those memberships came along with the $7,500.
Okay, so again, I still don't know the answer to this question, very simply. When does our membership end?
When the contract ends. We're out of contract.
We don't have a contract.
Well, they've obviously not ended our membership.
My question is, back to what Mr. Ross said, I don't know the difference between the 1,100 Diamond membership and the Emerald membership. My iPad's not working, so I don't have all the details. What we get, I don't know which ones, I think it's extremely important for us to be a member of the chamber. Very, very important. I don't know at what level I am comfortable with. It may be higher than the Emerald, but I don't know that. But I don't want our membership to drop. So I'm, even though I seconded the motion, it was for discussion, and we're having a great discussion, I like the idea of discussing it more maybe at a work session. I'm not willing to support the motion for $7,500 tonight, but I also don't want our membership to lapse in whatever we have to do tonight to keep that going. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any further discuss, Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chambers, and I have no intention of not continuing a relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. My recommendation is that we sign up as a member and still get some of the services based on that member. There was a handout that was given that kind of listed the things that you get with each membership. And if council, I'm looking at the Emerald membership, which is what I'm looking at from the schedule, that would be equivalent to what we're getting now, okay? I don't know that we need 10 copies and... and, you know, of, and I don't have it in front of me either, but I think the, the top tier, I think, is a little repetitious for what we need the Chamber for. I will tell you this, that the day after our discussion, when Chamber was here and we started talking about this, the next morning, on Wednesday morning, and I called the executive director and said, "You heard the same thing I did, and there's a big bone of contention here about your name and having to, to keep the identity of Temple Terrace." I think it is a travesty for us to have a Chamber of Commerce that doesn't have Temple Terrace on it. That's been there for 50 years. Again, this, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of operations. You guys need to tell me from a standpoint of policy what you'd like for me to do. I would be more than happy to do that. I do think that we can and we're capable of doing a more complete job of marketing and communicating to our city businesses and our residents than what we're getting out of the Chamber. Not to take anything from the Chamber. That's just my own personal, personal opinion. But I can tell you this, they were very adamant that they were going to keep their name Uptown. And when we first gave them a first draft, we actually typed in there the Greater Temple Terrace Chamber of Commerce, and it was changed. So, they are adamant that they're changing their name. And the day after our meeting, they were very clear to that. And that, that, to me, is something that we need to really think about. Thank you.
Councilman Shalura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've, I've served the city a long time, and I've sat on its council quite some time. And what I find sad is, it wasn't the city's move that brought this to a head, it was a Chamber's move. And changing your name from Temple Terrace to whatever you want to change into certainly is a, is a disconnect. It's a divorce to some degree, as far as I'm concerned. And you want to talk about interaction, Mr. Ross, you mentioned interaction. What do they do? I own multiple businesses in this city and beyond. The Chamber hasn't been to me in over two years. And I deal with a lot of people that come in this city, and not one time has somebody said, "Hey, here's a packet. Put me in touch with your tenants." Never happens. They do not help me. And I'm going to say it bluntly, the invoice came in last month for $175, and I put it aside, said, "I don't know if I'm going to renew this thing, because what do they do for me?" And I've served the city a long time. I want the city to do well, but when things are not, it's got to be a two-way street, and I don't see it as a two-way street. There are opportunities out there, and I don't think that they're being taken advantage of. The Chamber wants to do bigger and better things, then hey, more power to them or the folks that are involved with that. But I can assure you, plant City Chambers in place, City of Tampa Chambers in place, okay? They're not changing their names to Westshore or whatever you want to call them. Ebor City's Chamber is in place, but Temple Terrace Chamber's now been rebranded. As far as I'm concerned, it's not my chamber. So, I will not support it. I made those comments very clear the other night. Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, folks are here tonight. I don't golf. I'm a member because it says Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club. It adds character to our community. But if the Chamber's changing their name, then I don't recognize them as our chamber. That's my opinions. I feel very strongly about that. I will not support the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
All in favor of the motion on the table, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails. I would ask council, is there a secondary motion that you would like to make with regards to membership? As I listened to, to Councilman Chambers, I have found that if we go in at a certain level and choose to go up or choose to expand, people are always very happy if we choose to expand down the road. But we might want to consider if there's an interest of council to go with the recommendations of our city manager to ensure that we do have a continuity in membership. Is there a motion?
I move that we maintain a relationship with the, with the Chamber as a member of the, of the Uptown Chamber of Commerce, maybe even at a Diamond level, because then we can go to the annual luncheon, but, or director's party, whatever that is, but limited to the, no more than Diamond level.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Did we give the direction necessary, Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Counsel, new business, first up, Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Something that I don't know whether everybody's aware or not, aware of or not, Mr. Loeb had commented on it during the, on his discussion. But yesterday afternoon, I was notified from Chairman, Commissioner Miller's office that he is going to be requesting on the 19th that a new sale, a new sales tax initiative being initiated, they're calling for a public hearing in, on April 1st for a half-cent sales tax to replace the one cent that passed but is stuck up in the, in the state Supreme Court at this point. The basics, and I think a lot of it's still in flux, but the basics of it, 25% of the SRTAX would go to HART. It'd be a 30-year deal. 25% go to HART, and the remaining 75% will be broken down between the county and the other municipalities in the city based upon state statutes. And that's, I think, relatively nebulous, but because I don't, I didn't have enough time to figure out what that is. But I just wanted to bring it to the, to the council's aware, awareness that this is coming down. Oh, and also to come back with the gasoline tax that had been defeated, had been tabled a couple of months ago. They wanted to go for the additional five cent. So, they'll have, they'll have a public hearing on that on March 4th and also to, to discuss that. So, I forwarded this to Mr. Stevenson and to Ms. Shoshon this afternoon, and once I'd seen the emails come across, and as well as a summary that I received as my position on HART as to the status of the one-cent sales tax for, for transportation. And they did not seem positive that it was, that it was going to pass or going to be approved. It looks like it's going to be probably defeated in the, in the state Supreme Court. Arguments were held on February 5th, I believe it was, and the play-by-play that was given as the analysis by the attorneys present, there was a lot of gnashing of teeth and shaking of heads. So, it, I'm not a prognosticator. I wouldn't go to Vegas on this one, but I'm not, I'm not holding that much, much hope for that. But then they got to decide what they can do with the money that they've already gotten. But that's, that's another issue. But I wanted to bring that to council's awareness.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Chambers?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. The first, I'm our representative to the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and every year they hosted a award ceremony, a Future of the Region Awards. And in the past, our city's been extremely successful in submitting programs and projects for this award. And it's coming up April 24th. Deadline, I don't know the, off the top of my head the deadline, but I want to ask council if we could ask our city manager and staff to submit projects. I, off the top of my head, I've come up with at least four, family complex renovation, the Focus Cafe, the Alert Temple Terrace Program, and our Buddy Baseball, Baseball Field. And I just want staff to look at those applications and see if we could submit something.
That's excellent, Councilman. Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Sure. I make that in a form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Second thing, if I could ask the city manager to give us a brief update on the irrigation project with the golf course.
We have, between the golf course and, and my office, we've exchanged documents trying to look at the SWIPMUD agreement, is that tri-party agreement that we're looking at. By coincidence, I've been able to go through that document. We've exchanged a couple ideas, but we really haven't met. But coincidentally, we have a meeting set up for tomorrow at 2:30 to try to iron out a couple of things. And I think that we'll be forthcoming with that agreement. Don't think there's anything in there that is, that is going to impede progress. Let me put it that way.
So, you think it will be on a agenda sooner than later?
Well, I, I, I think the game plan, obviously, would be it's got to go back to SWIPMUD, and we got to sit down with SWIPMUD and talk with SWIPMUD about stuff that we have made changes. The golf course has made some changes to that document, so has the city. So, it's been, it's been through Ms. Shoshon. She's, she's had a chance to look at it. So, I need to put the two documents side by side. There's a couple of things that, that hopefully we can resolve tomorrow, and then I can clean that document up. We get it back to SWIPMUD and have a meeting with SWIPMUD.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question. I have a question on the same issue. Has the timeframe changed? I mean, we were pants on fire when we were first told this, and are we getting close to the deadline here?
Well, when we were first told this, we weren't aware that we had a tri-party agreement that SWIPMUD was asking for either. So, we've had to kind of take a step back because we've got to work out this agreement with SWIPMUD. SWIPMUD was, was very adamant about us being party to this agreement for the purpose of procurement requirements or procedures and just some controls that they would normally put on someone that they're giving money to. So, the kitty, the kitty, the city has agreed to become a, a third party, if you would, in order to interject that we have controls in place that made them feel comfortable, that we have procurement manual and, and procedures in place that made them happy. So, again, I don't, I have no idea how long it would take us to get back with SWIPMUD, but I know that SWIPMUD and, and Mr. Music can certainly vouch for this. I know they're anxious to see the agreement as well, so.
So, the grant deadline is not in danger?
I, I, you know, I don't know that, I've been fed that. I, I don't know that the grant, Mr. Music, has something other than what I know. I mean, I don't know that we're in jeopardy of losing that $250,000 grant.
Okay.
That has not been, been told to me.
That would be my question.
Again, I, we are, we're going to move forward with this exponentially, and we've been busy with a couple of big projects and the Chamber project. So, this is the next one that's on top of my, top of my desk.
Councilman Schisler.
If I may offer comment regarding that, we were probably in more danger of the project shaking itself apart if the city did not get involved in a tri-party agreement, per, per SWIPMUD.
Okay. Is there any other new business to come before council? Councilman Donahue?
I just want to announce to everyone that the Temple Terrace Garden Club will be hosting its annual spring market. So, if you're getting anxious to rip out all that stuff that's frozen a couple of weeks ago, come to the market. It's a full day of plants and from azaleas to orchids, blooming annuals, garden items, plant starts. We have some unique vendors this year. We have quite a bit of yard art. So, it's, it's a, it's a full day from 8:00 to 3:00 on March 7. The city has also partnered with us by moving Arbor Day. So, if you've been waiting for the announcement about Arbor Day and when that was going to come, it's actually on March 7. We will be, we'll have speakers about trees and obviously certain trees that we prefer to grow here in Temple Terrace, but also we will have a large amount of free trees to distribute to anyone in the city who would like one. We'll also have floral arrangement and horticulture inside the clubhouse. We have entertainment. So, the whole point is mark your calendar, March 7, Woodmont Park from 8:00 to 3:00. Thank you.
Is there any other new business? We'll go to the city manager's report, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I really just got a bunch of announcements to make here. Last Saturday, the Bonnie Bray ribbon cutting, the improvements over at Bonnie Bray Park, for those of you that haven't seen it, unfortunately, I forgot all about the opening. I apologize. But the improvements are awesome. You ought to see the equipment that was put in there, and Lees and Services did an awesome job getting all that put together. This Saturday is opening day for Buddy Baseball, talking about Buddy Baseball Fields. And for those of you that have never been, I would encourage you to go. It is an awesome event, and their new season with their new field, it'll be exciting to, to see the kids out there. This Friday, obviously, Dayla's Farm Night, I was going to mention it, but you did a great job, and I'm glad you're bringing a dead ban. Just to remind council, we have our groundbreaking February 26. I know that Mr. Pauli had alluded to that in his report, CRA report, but this is a long time coming. I hope that everybody comes out. We, we should support certainly this groundbreaking. I think it'll be the, the start of what we've all been waiting for, for a long time. February 22 is the Hickory Tournament that we really didn't know much about. But you want to, you want to talk about that, Mr. Chambers?
Sure. I know you're part of that. It's Hickory weekend and Monday in Temple Terrace, and it starts off at Saturday with the Hickory Hacker scramble. And that's not open to, it's open to anybody, not just club members, four-person teams. If you want to come out and support the team that finished last, last year, that's us, my team. It's really hard to play with Hickory golf clubs. But anyway, that, that's a fun event. It's a fundraiser for Preservation Society. Saturday night at the club, again, not just for club members, for anybody. It's called the Hickory Hacker Ball. It's a, I won't say formal, but you can dress up in your knickers and your twenties garb to come out, and you don't have to dress up like that. But it's great food, dancing, and music that night. Sunday is the Mike Stevens Challenge. Mike Stevens is the director of Florida Hickory Golf. He does an event at the club. It's a three-person team, totally different format. And then Monday's the Pro-Am Tournament, and it's a professional Hickory Golf Association. They, they have $5,000 worth of prize money. There's professionals from all over the country and years past, different, different countries. And then there's an amateur division for those of us that want to play in it. But that's Monday at 11 o'clock is tea time for that. So, it's a lot of good golf. You get to see a lot of great costumes, and it's a fun weekend.
A couple of other things, Madam Mayor. Thank you, James. Sherri, you mentioned, Ms. Donahue, you mentioned the fireworks. We had put the fireworks out for RFP. Mr. Langfeld is, is encouraging in that we've got a, a company that we believe will not run into the same issues we had last year. And we'll guarantee that as much as we can. We've tried to do this a little bit differently this year so that we have a little bit more assurances of getting people out there and getting things not only delivered but staged way beforehand. We'll have to make some adjustments with some security with the fire department, but we're, we're rather confident that what he's got going on, I think, is going to work a little bit better for us. That we're not waiting on the last minute to, to get things delivered and, and staged, which has been a problem in the past. So, hopefully that works out well. We seem to have a, a good company in, on hand. And just to give you a, you know, last, last week, we had a storm blow through. Just to let you know, we've, we spent about $12,000 in unbudgeted funds for disposal cost. Certainly, our crews have been out there working. They've collected about 280 tons worth of trees. So, and we still have a little bit, but I think Mr. LeBlanc's got a pretty good handle on it. We're in pretty good shape. So, we had a lot of trees, big trees come down. We're not sure what happened. No one has told me yet that we had a tornado come through, but we certainly had a good blow. So, I just wanted to kind of give you that heads up so that you know that we have been, in fact, trying to do our best with that and doing it in-house. Our guys do a fantastic job at it. So, thank you.
Thank you, city manager. City attorney's report, Ms. Shoshon.
Councilman Schisler pretty much covered what I was going to say about the transportation SRTAX. So, thank you. The only thing I really have to add to that is if you want to see who was shaking heads and gnashing teeth, you can watch the oral arguments for the Florida Supreme Court on the Florida Supreme Court's website. They're all They're also on YouTube, but this particular argument is not, I couldn't find it yet. They seem to be back in November, as far as the, the running of the videos for the oral arguments. But if you keep checking on the Supreme Court, Supreme Court of Florida website, you can see which judges were doing and saying what. So, thank you.
Is there any other business to come before council? We are adjourned. See everyone at Farm Night Barbecue.